Thank you, everyone, for coming to the Planning and Development Committee of the whole meeting number seven. I have a request to remove 5K on the agenda. The request for decision service gets 5K, SK 20007, Plan 21, 63, Lot 885, Tundra Bridge, Community and Development Services, CGS, for the municipality of Iqaluit, the Arctic Winter Games Arena. And that has to be removed before we can adopt the agenda. I need a move and a second move by Mayor Bell, seconded by Counselor Awa. Those in favor of the agenda, thank you. Moving along, there is no minutes. Declaration of interests, Counselor Stevenson.
Thank you, Chair. I don't have a declaration of interest. I wanted to make it clear that though my role at QIA, in my role at QIA, I'm neither financially remunerated by nor a decision maker for either QPI or QDBC, and I'm not declaring interest on items related to them.
Thank you, sir. Any, anyone else? Delegations? None. Deferred business and tabled items, we have 4A cabins, verbal by Mayor Bell, please.
Thank you, Counselor Kumlik. There is no update at this time. All the staff are working diligently to bring something to us in the near future. Right now, we're just leaving this on the agenda for all future meetings. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Moving along, 5 new business, and we just remove, no, we're going into 5A. Jennifer, welcome back.
Thank you.
And Mark is here, too.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, Mark is behind me. That's right. Good evening, everyone. Before you, our first request for decision is a development permit application by Nunavut Housing Corporation for a 4 for 4 stacked row dwelling along the beachfront, Buildings 1,000 to 1,010. It will be, it is in the Sejanga overlay policies that it has to abide by. NHC is proposing to develop the site with 4 fourplex dwellings, two bedroom apartments on the bottom and two one bedroom apartments on the top for each. The bottom units are aging in place. Two of them are actually completely built for persons with disabilities, so completely accessible, and the other two ground dwelling units are aging in place. Each two bedroom ground floor unit is 68 square meters, so a variance would be requested for that. The zoning bylaw does require that to be 75 square meters, so there is a variance being asked for that. There's also a survey sketch as part of this application. It will provide a lot for each of the buildings. Currently, it's five smaller lots. We've looked at it as one complete lot for this development. We're asked that they separate them, so each building has its own lot. And that is the survey sketch portion of this. The other variances that they're requesting outside of the unit area, there is a relaxation requirement for a 1 meter landscape strip along the adjoining street. That is a requirement for backhoe parking. And they're also asking for a relaxation on the lot area from a required 200 square meters to 185 square meters. Disadvantages of this project, there's an informal road, as everyone's aware, that exits at the library and between the Building 1,001 and 738, I believe is the number, Chris Grove's place. So the informal road that runs along the IOL lands in behind, there is 6.4 meters for that lot. It is a lot. It is, it is not a roadway. And so the way that the road is aligned currently, part of the development will take a bit of that street off, so we've recommended that they put up a fence along their lot line to delineate that. Also, if we do ask them to realign the road, or we decide that we want to realign the road, we also have to consider that there will be, need to be three telephone poles that may be impacted by that as well. Another option is to simply just gate off that access. So with that, I can read off the recommendations. Approve DP 19-04 to allow the development of 4 fourplex dwelling units totaling 16 units with an overall gross floor area of 1,485 square meters, subject to the city's standard conditions and the special conditions found in Attachment 3 and is shown in Plans in Attachment 5. Approve a variance to Section 6.9 of Zoning Bylaw 704 to allow no landscape strip along the lot line adjacent to the street. Approve a variance to Section 13.4 to reduce the dwelling unit area minimum from 75 square meters to 68 square meters. Approve a variance to Section 13.9 of Zoning Bylaw 704 to reduce the lot area minimum from 200 meters squared to 185 square meter per unit. And approve a variance to Section 4.22 of the zoning bylaw to permit a projection of the deck slash ramp to 0 meters from a lot line, whereas the bylaw requires a 0.5 meter minimum. And approve survey sketch SK 20005 to allow for a reconfiguration of lots 394, 395, 396, 397, 398, 399 on Plan 768 into four separate lots, one for each fourplex that meet zoning provisions and building setbacks. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. I need a mover. Move by Mayor Bell, seconded by Deputy Mayor Booster. Counselor Stevenson?
Thank you, Chair. I guess the recommendation to allow them to have smaller floor plans, so 68 meters squared instead of 75 is our current minimum, would you be able to speak to why 75 is our current minimum? I mean, I know you weren't there when we wrote those, but is that some kind of, is there, you know, a benchmark of 75 in other jurisdictions or anything like that that you could speak to?
I'm not completely sure where the 75 square meters came from. They did provide me with a reason as to why they wanted to reduce it to 68, but where that 75 came from, I'm not sure. And I'm not sure of it, of other jurisdictions.
What were their, sorry, Chair, if I may, what were the other, what were their reasons for wanting to reduce?
The reason, well, I said that the taking that size off was like removing one bedroom worth of space, and they suggested that it was for aging in place for elders, and they didn't want people to take advantage if there was more room for them to crash at their place or what have you. So they did intentionally want to keep them small for that reason, so that the elders would, it would just be them that would be living in there.
Any other questions? Questions or comments? If not, ready to vote? All those in favor? Unanimous? Thank you. Moving along. Jennifer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Our second development permit request for decision is for the Nunavut Arctic College Building. It's Kikatani Properties, Inc., that is requesting this. They want to put in a solar panel installation with a 100 kilowatt power rating. Our zoning bylaw permits four power ratings of 15 kilowatts. So it was written at a time when the solar, the advanced solar that we have now wasn't available, so that's where the change came from. So they're asking to permit a variance to allow them to install a solar panel installation with 100 kilowatt worth of power rating on the building. It would be located on the rooftop. There's an upper rooftop and a lower rooftop. It would cover both. And it's also some other energy efficiencies for the development permit include new siding, increased insulation, new windows, new doors. I can read the recommendation. Staff recommends that council, that committee recommends to council that to approve development permit application 19-056 to permit the construction of a utility installation in accordance with special conditions in Attachment 2, standard conditions in Attachment 3 and is shown in the submitted plans in Attachment 4, 5, and 6. And 2, to approve the variance application in accordance with the special conditions in Attachment 3 to permit a utility installation with a power rating of 100 kilowatts, where a Section 3 of the zoning bylaw defines a small scale renewable energy source as having a power rating of less than 15 kilowatts. Thank you.
I need mover. Move by Counselor Awa, seconded by Counselor Shepherd. Questions or comments? I think that's a pretty straightforward idea, proposal, and they already have that solar panel thing going. Any questions or comments? Atigo Stevenson?
Thank you, Chairperson. I don't really have a question, but I'm happy that this installment is being put on a building. I wish that there were more applications like this, because I wish there were more people taking advantage of the new ability within Nunavut to supply power to the grid. I still feel like it's onerous as a process to be able to do it, and I wish that there was a way that we, as a city, could support people who wanted to, individuals who wanted to do this same thing on a smaller scale and use what is ample solar opportunity in most of our private homes in this community to do exactly what this organization is trying to do, which is reduce their cost and reduce the use of fossil fuel for producing energy.
Thank you.
Amy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just for your information, I'm part of a group called the Arctic Renewables Society, locally here in town, a group working towards more alternative energy solutions with a big focus on homeowners and residential alternative energy solutions. So right now, we've just received funding to put on a training sessions for our courses for residents or to, to be able to complete energy audits in homes as one of the first steps. And then the second part to this is actually a solar panel installation training program. So if anyone wants more information on that, I can certainly find that information for you. So I think that the call is almost closed for the energy audit, but there may still be some room, so we can talk.
All right. Thank you. Was that your hand up? Okay. Any questions or comments to the motion? If not, all those in favor? Unanimous? Thank you. Moving along. Jennifer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This next application is for a zoning bylaw amendment as well as a development permit application. The zoning bylaw, this is, sorry, for a three-story building for a dental clinic to be located on Fred Coleman Street at Building 767. They need, they require a zoning bylaw amendment to permit the medical facility as a use, so it would need to be changed from B1 business, Central Business Zone, sorry, to B2 Exception Zone 5 District Commercial Special Zone. Requesting two variances, I believe. The first variance is for a, to reduce the lot frontage, a reduction of the front yard setback, I apologize, it's 3, and to permit a projection to 0 meters to a lot line. So the development, the proposal is, meets all zoning compliance and whatnot. The development is a three-story building. It will have a dental clinic on the bottom, 10 apartments above on two stories. And it does require a site-specific zoning bylaw amendment to permit the medical facility to reduce the front lot, front lot frontage, sorry, to 17.21 instead of 20 meters, reduction of the front yard setback to 1.22 meters instead of the required 3 meters, and projection of the ramp to 0 meters where the zoning bylaw requires 0.5 meters. And I will read the recommendations. Staff recommends that Planning Committee recommend that council give first reading to bylaw number 903 to rezone Lot 941 and Plan 3596 and Lot 81 on Plan 3, sorry, 674 for central, from Central Business Zone, height 13 meters, to District Commercial Special Exception Zone 5, B25, in order to permit the proposed dental clinic, a reduction of the minimum lot frontage, a reduction of the front yard setback, and to permit the ramp to project to 0 meters on the lot line. Subsequent to the approval of the zoning bylaw amendment, staff recommends that the Planning Committee recommend to council to approve development permit application 20-011 to permit a dental clinic on the ground floor with two floors of dwelling units totaling 10 dwelling units and eight parking spaces, subject to the city's standard conditions, the special conditions of approval in Attachment 3, and is shown on the drawings included in Attachment 4. Thank you.
Move by Mayor Bell, seconded by Counselor Lukasi. Questions or comments? Mayor Bell?
Thank you. I just want to say that it's nice to see a company that's been in Iqaluit for many, many years, decades, actually, is now moving out of, hopefully, if we approve, obviously, moving out of a rented space to their own building. And it's a redevelopment of that area, because that's right across the street from the Butler Buildings, which we plan on developing within the next year. So this is, you know, this is fantastic for that area, and I really support this. Thank you.
Any comments or questions? If not, oh, Counselor Stevenson?
Thank you, Chairperson Kumlik. I think it also speaks to, again, our need to revisit our zoning bylaw and our general plan to make sure that this area, the way it's described in our general plan is not the way it actually has developed and really should develop. And I, you know, it looks, if you look in this neighborhood, like a sort of commercial area. It's the new commercial areas, you can see by the little places of commerce popping up in it, and it really should be reflected, but our zoning byline, our general plan are out of date, and so they don't reflect that.
Any other comments or questions? Ready to vote? All those in favor? Thank you, unanimous. Moving along. Jennifer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This application is to allow an accessory building to be located in the front yard of Plan 2735, Block 25, Lot 11. It is, the applicant is Eric Ella. The way the building is sited, it's very much at the back of the lot, so the only place that he can really build an accessory building is in his front lot. However, the zoning bylaw does have this restriction that anything built in the, accessory building built in the front yard has to be 12 square meters or less. So this is an application for a variance to allow the building to be 20 meters squared and in the front yard. And I will read the recommendation by staff. We recommend that Planning and Development Committee recommend to council to approve the variance application to permit a relaxation to Section 4.1C of the zoning bylaw, to permit an increase in the maximum gross floor area of an accessory building located in the front yard from 12 meters squared to 20 meters squared. And 2, approval of development permit application DP 20-30030 to permit a 20 meters squared accessory building in accordance with the standard conditions of approval in Attachment 2, and is shown in the drawings filed with the application for DP 20-030. Thank you.
I need a mover and a second. Move by Kyle. Counselor Shepherd, seconded by Counselor Lukasi. Questions or comments? Stevenson?
Thank you, Chairperson Kumlik. Can you remind me, Jennifer, if, if we were to approve this variance request, will there be any facility for neighbors to have comment between our approval and the actual approval?
A variance notice was delivered to the nearby neighbors, all neighbors within 30 meters of the subject property. It did highlight that we would be visiting this this evening, and they were given the opportunity, if they had questions or concerns, that they could submit it in writing or request to speak by phone, and I received no requests.
Thank you for that.
Counselor Awa?
All development applica, or all approved developments are sent off to the assessment team, and they do take these things in consideration when doing property taxes. So I expect that, that that would increase the property taxes.
Any other questions? If not, ready to vote? All those in favor? Thank you, unanimous. Moving along.
Counselor Kumlik?
Yes, sir.
Deputy Mayor Booster didn't vote.
Oh, sorry. I didn't see that. How do you vote?
I vote against it.
Okay. Let it be recorded. One against. Thank you, Mayor Bell, and moving along. Jennifer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This development permit application before you is to amend a development permit, DP 19-004, for the Kikatalik Business Development Corporation, the Hotel and Conference Center. They submitted a new site plan that included lands, some very slight landscape changes and an addition of 17 parking stalls, a realignment of the parking bit, and signage. That was the other thing. So very minor nature, however, it's over 1,000 square meter development and does require approval from council. I'll read the recommendation. Approve development permit DP 20-034 in order to amend development permit 19-004 and permit the proposed changes to parking and landscaping, namely the increase in parking spaces provided and the addition of signage and other landscape components, and in accordance with the special conditions of approval, Attachment 3, standard conditions of approval in Attachment 4, and is shown on the site plan and landscape plan in Attachment 5. Thank you.
I need a mover and second. Move by Mayor Bell, seconded by Counselor Shepherd, sorry. Any comments or questions? If not, ready to vote? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay. Thank you, unanimous. Moving along.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This next application is for a general plan amendment and a zoning bylaw amendment for Building 3095 in Apex. It's located right next to Apeq Hall. The applicant is requesting the amendments to allow the development of a four-unit row house. The general plan amendment is required to add row dwelling to the list of limited developments approved by council that's found in Policy 7.5.4 that's concerning lots that have truck It would add the row dwelling to the list. The zoning bylaw amendment is to change the zoning from neighborhood commercial that it currently is to R2 medium density residential. A row dwelling is not permitted in the neighborhood commercial zone, and therefore, the zoning bylaw amendment is required. I did speak with the superintendent of Utilador and Truck Services, and he indicated that there is sufficient capacity in the truck services fleet to meet the demands of the proposed development. Generally speaking, there are four different types of zoning in Apex. R1A, which is low density residential, the republic institutional, the schools and whatnot, and neighborhood commercial and open space. If this is approved, this will be the only medium residential R2 zone in Apex. We did not identify any disadvantages to this request, and I will read the recommendations that staff recommends, that committee recommends to council to give first reading to General Plan Amendment bylaw number 901, to amend Policy 7.5.4 of General Plan 703 to include the addition of row dwelling to the list of limited developments approved by council and area serviced by truck services. 2, give first reading to the zoning bylaw amendment, bylaw 902, to rezone Lot 11, Block 6, Plan 4400, from neighborhood commercial B3 to medium residential R2. And 3, direct staff to hold a public hearing to be held after first reading and prior to second reading of bylaw 901 and 902. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Move by Mayor Bell, seconded by Deputy Mayor Booster. Comments or questions? Counselor Shepherd?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Not that there's been a lot of success in recent years drawing business to Apex, but are there other commercial lots available in that area?
Sort of in that whole corner area, all of those lots are zoned neighborhood commercial. I can't, I can't give you the exact number, though, sorry.
Counselor Awa?
Each dwelling unit that would be included in the, each row dwelling, each unit itself would be a permitted 2,000 liters per day. So over the whole project, it would be 8,000 liters that they'd be provided, and the calculation did show that there would only really look like 2,460 for all four. So I was trying to, to highlight that the demand for water probably would be, would be lower than 2,000 liters per day per unit.
Okay. Kyi Obi? Kyi Obi. Okay. If not, ready to vote? All those in favor? Unanimous? Thank you. Moving along. Number G.
This again is a request for variance. Development permit 20-037 to amend DP 18-042. This is for a building in Apex 3002. It's a semi-detached building. The applicant wishes to amend the permit to include an addition of a mechanical room, and that has caused the site plan to shift just ever so slightly, and now they require a variance to permit a setback of 2.43 meters in the interior side yard where a three-meter setback is required by the zoning bylaw. Another thing that was noted when I was doing this request for decision is that the original 18-042 considered this to be a duplex, and when I looked at it, it actually is a semi-detached, so a change of use would also be required. So we will call this, if approved, a semi-detached and not a duplex. And I will read the recommendation. Staff recommends that the Planning and Development Committee recommend that council approve development permit application DP 20-037 for plan 1986, block two, lot three, to permit a change of use from duplex to semi-detached. And two, approve variance to section 9.6 of zoning bylaw 704 to reduce the required interior side yard setback from three meters to 2.43 meters in accordance with the following submission, site plan received by the city August 14, 2020, and floor plans, drawings received the same day. Thank you.
Thank you. That was ever so slightly. I need a mover and a seconder. Moved by Shepherd, seconded by Lukasi. Any comments or questions? Stevenson?
Thank you, Chairperson Akumulik. This is straight out of my ignorance, but what's the difference between a duplex and a semi-detached unit?
A duplex is one on top of the other, and a semi-detached is side by side.
Guess what I thought? No other difference. Fair enough.
We learn everything, anything every day. Any other comments or questions? If not, ready to vote? Ever so slightly proposal? All those in favor? Thank you. Unanimous. And moving along to H.
H is for a survey sketch application that was part of a development for the beer wine store, so DP 17-001. To have this survey sketch approved was part and registered, completed, was part of that development permit. A special condition, however, that didn't happen, and here we are today to ask you to approve a survey sketch that does show, reconfigures lots one, two, three on block 46, plan 2722, and it provides the city with a 6.74 road widening of the front of the beer store and where that new office building, Jam Investments, right beside is going. So we're just asking that committee recommend to council to approve survey sketch 20004 in accordance with the survey sketch in attachment two and special conditions in attachment three to re-survey lots one, two, and three on block 46 and plan 2722. Thank you.
Moved by Kyle, seconded by Mayor Bell. Questions or comments? Solomon?
We're gonna make sure that. There's a bunch of them. It's a year ago. 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 It's a year ago.
We're gonna make-- any other questions or comments? If not, ready to vote? All those in favor? Unanimous? Thank you. Number I.
In record time. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Before you is development permit DP 20-038. It's the Northwest Company. Again, this is a solar panel installation. It's a third-party company that is requesting this solar installation to be placed on the roof of the new warehouse of Walmart-- not Walmart, sorry, Normart. Slip? So the power rating for this one is 300 kilowatts, but again, the restriction of the zoning bylaw is 15 kilowatts, and therefore a variance is requested. I will read the recommendation, and that is that the Planning and Development Committee recommend that council approve development permit application 20-038 in order to permit the construction of the proposed utility installation with a power rating of 300 kilowatts in accordance with the special conditions of approval in attachment two, the standard conditions of approval in attachment three, and site plan and detailed drawings, attachment four, dated August 11, 2020. And two, approve a variance to permit a utility installation with a power rating of 300 kilowatts on lot three, block 57, plan 2757 in the core area. Thank you.
Moved by Stevenson, seconded by Awah. Questions or comments? Mayor Bell?
Thank you, Counselor Akumulik. I just want to make sure that this installation will reduce the power costs that North Company charges back through their product instead of them just making money by putting the power back into the grid.
Any other questions or comments? If not, ready to vote? All those in favor, please raise your hand. One, two. All unanimous? Thank you. And moving along to last but not least, J. 1087 CGS Housing Authority.
Sorry, Mr. Chair. This is for a survey sketch application, SK 20-006, plan 184, block 1087, remainder one. This is the Housing Authority Building, number 1105. Although it does appear on a map that it is a lot, it actually has never been surveyed, so it belongs to the remainder group, 184, Group 1087, which is all of our open space. So the GN is requesting to have that surveyed so that it can be titled. And I don't have a recommendation before me.
Okay. We understand. Moved by Stevenson, seconded by Awah. Questions or comments? If not, ready to vote? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you. Unanimous. Thanks, Jennifer. That's a lot of hard work. And we have one item left. CCANS verbal by Counselor Shepherd.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So recently, municipal enforcement began enforcing, after a period of not enforcing, as far as I believe, the issue of CCANS in the core area. As we've identified many times tonight, the general plan and zoning bylaws are quite outdated at this point in time, and they seem to contradict somewhat on this matter. The general plan under the beautifying the core policies, 5.1.3, policy three, forbids shipping containers in the core area in its entirety. The general plan-- or sorry, the zoning bylaw forbids CCANS only in the capital district, B1, B2, and R3 zones, but not in the CUNA district. Seeing as how the use of CCANS is an economically viable and efficient manner of development, there's many instances in the community where CCANS have been utilized in a quite aesthetically pleasing and beautiful way, and incorporated into houses as a means of storage, I would like to make a motion to recommend to council to direct staff to develop proposed changes to necessary bylaws, plans, and policies to allow CCANS in the core when being fully incorporated into existing structures in appearance and function, and to set guidelines to regulate their appearance.
Thank you, Counselor Shepherd. I do have a document to table. It's a petition by 30 people to suspend the application and enforcement of Equalwee zoning bylaw number 704. I think Mayor Bell knows more about it. Go ahead.
Thank you. Actually, I don't know anything other than the petition had been started by our former mayor, Madeline Redfern. I just want to point out that it wasn't municipal enforcement that enforced the laws. Ms. Redfern sought out an application from planning, didn't fulfill that obligation, and moved her CCANS without the permission from planning. Municipal enforcement was then notified, which then started an enforcement action. And now the petition. That was just my side caveat to the situation.
Okay. Thank you. Kyle introduced the motion. Is there a seconder? Seconded by Counselor Nata. Questions or comments? Stevenson?
Thank you, Chairperson Akumulik. Well, I guess first off, as we're just adding comment, I'd say that it should be made clear that the petition was signed, I think primarily by people who are not in compliance with the bylaw currently, which makes them relatively interested parties in having the bylaw not enforced. I, as you all know, have been a firm complainer about the fact that this council and there-- well, the city and therefore this council has not revisited the zoning bylaw. And general plan, I think I brought it up even earlier in this meeting. I'm wondering, though, about this motion and why-- like, why are we having a separate motion? Why don't we just revisit our general plan and zoning bylaw like we're supposed to? And then we can deal with this issue and all the other issues that are coming up because that document's outdated. I mean, shouldn't we just put it on a list with the other things that we need to fix about those two documents? I would really like to have a general plan that I had worked on and that I had, you know, presented to community, and I felt that it was-- it reflected my council's view of the development of our city. Right now, I don't have that. I have a general plan that's 10 years old and has glaring errors in it that need to be corrected, errors that may not have been errors at the time but have developed into problematic portions of those documents. I really feel like we just need to deal with those documents, and then we'd be able to, you know, fix or not fix this problem, depending. I certainly have concern with CCANS in the downtown core. I don't, you know, necessarily think they should be gotten rid of altogether, but that could all be built into those two documents instead of a separate motion to amend a document I don't even believe in.
Thank you. I have Mayor Bell first.
Thank you, Counselor Akumulik. I think the-- to Counselor Shepherd's motion is that there's an enforcement action being taken right now. There have been CCANS moved without permission, and municipal enforcement did give an order to correct the error, and that's where the motion comes into. Well, yeah, I'm not-- I won't speak for you, but that's what I believe, the reason for the motion to be coming forward. I would like to see the-- I'm not for or against the motion, to tell you the unskilled truth right now, but I would like to see the petition. Thank you.
Counselor Awah?
We're gonna make sure that. They can't ignore them 2004. Then it's a little bit. You were like, we got some of that. So you can. We're gonna send it to you. And then you can see. Um, that's six. I think it's a little bit. It's a little bit. It's a little bit. So you can see. 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 So you can see.
So what the building inspectors do is they put the obligation on the applicant, the person. And the person has to then hire an engineer. The engineer has to look at the situation, design it. And fundamentally, the engineer has to say that, in their opinion, I'll call it a renovation. Will meet the intentions of the building code. So, so where I'm going is this is an added expense. And I believe the engineer, when it's finished, has to actually go and inspect it and sort of say, yes. This has been done according to my design, and again, it meets the intent of the building code. So there, the point I'm trying to make is there is an additional expense to the people interested in doing the renovation to a CCAN. Thank you.
Stevenson?
Thank you, uh, Mark. Thank you for that answer, but I, I would like to still know when the review of the general plan and zoning bylaw will be taking place.
I'm very sorry, but to the best of my ability, I'm not aware that we've been actually directed to do a full review of the general plan or zoning bylaw. What we're currently putting through the system is the housekeeping that was done. By the previous council and, and trying to get all the consolidations done.
Mayor Bill? You had your hand up?
Yeah, and then I got confused. Um, thank you. So, uh, Mark, thank, thank you, Counselor Akumalik. Uh, one of the housekeeping items coming forward is to allow CCANS in. All areas of town, I guess, as long as they have been cladded or covered to look. More like a building. But I, I, I wonder if, if that's one. So I know in, on, uh, in my area of town, I'm allowed to have one CCAN at the back of my property. Um, with a development permit to move there, uh, including a permit to move the, move the CCAN to the location. Um, a lot of these properties, including the petition starter, uh, have multiple. CCAN. So is the thought process to allow multiple CCANS in properties or is it still one or is it two or?
Through you, Chair. The, so the policy right now is, is addressing the core area designation. It, it's not um, suggesting any changes or amendments to the existing content. That allows one CCAN in certain specified zones.
Okay, Kyle?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. When I was reading through the housekeeping, excuse me, recommendations. The issue relating to CCANS in there came across to me as, excuse me. As being more for the, the basis of housing and the wording. It didn't seem to relate to an accessory structure. So I'm just wondering if the proposed changes in the housekeeping measures relating to CCANS. Are related to their use as an accessory structure as well, or just as, you know, the basis of a, of a larger structure?
The way I read the policy is it's broadly worded, so it talks about to be used as the frame of a building. So a building could be, a principal dwelling could be accessory.
Okay. What was your motion again? Yeah, I'd like, I'd like to hear your motion again.
So my motion was to. Re- uh, request to council to direct administration to develop proposed changes. To necessary bylaws, plans and policies to allow CCANS in the core when being fully incorporated into existing structure and appearance. And function and to regulate their appearance.
Okay. Any other comments? Stevenson?
Thank you, Chairperson Akumalik. So I'm, I'm bordering on flabbergasted that the director of planning and lands doesn't have any intention or didn't know that he was supposed to be. Revisiting the zoning bylaw or the, the general plan. Amy, do you think you could speak to that?
Um, yes. So you may recall, um, previously when Northern Futures was working on uh, the updates to those documents. And um, and so the um, the work that's being done right now was to um, update. The zoning bylaw and general plan rather than a full uh, redo process. Um, so we're continuing with that work that was started, um, that was started then, and that work's nearly done to update those documents.
Okay, Tigo?
I don't have them in front of me, but built into those documents is that they need to be not just updated, but complete, well, revisited in a. Thorough fashion after, I think it was six years, so two thousand and sixteen was when they became no longer technically in date. I don't have them in front, so I can't clarify that, but that means that, I mean, it's, we're legislated to be doing what we're supposed to be doing.
Uh, yeah, so this, this document, um, the changes have been tracked as uh, time has gone on. Um, as to what needed to be updated and this thorough review, I would say, um, through these processes. Um, has been done, is nearly completed. Um, and if council does wish to start from scratch with a new general plan and zoning bylaw, this document would still be very useful. It'll be useful today to allow planning, the planning department to um, to be able to do its work as they need those documents. Um, but it would also be useful in the future because all of these information will be updated.
Okay. To the motion, Mayor Bill? Lukasi?
Okay, thanks, Akumalik. So with this motion, Kyle Shepherd, um, Counselor Shepherd is bringing forward. I could have five CCANS that look like my apartment outside my place? Okay, I just wanted clarification. Um. Okay, that's it.
Counselor Shepherd?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The motion is to direct, is to request council to direct administration to develop a policy that we would then have to approve.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Um. We have that petition too, so. That might be a separate issue. Um, uh, the way I. Go ahead.
Sorry, a point of order. I don't think that petition is actually tabled, right?
No, um, I just brought it up, so I was going to say that. At the next council meeting, I would like to introduce and table it. If that's, that's a separate issue from your motion, sorry. Any other comments or questions to the motion? Go ahead, Stevenson?
I, I mean, I don't even know. I, I can't support Counselor Shepherd's motion, not because I don't agree with the, the change that needs to take place. But we're ten years since we did a, a planning uh, document. We need to consult the public. We can't just say we're going to come up with things. We can't just put that on staff to do. We need to consult the public. That's part of the process of knowing how your city's going to develop. I had assumed that was coming. I thought that was coming like, right now. I, I had only just kind of understood that maybe COVID had slowed things down, but we need to. And I'm going to make a motion after we're done voting on Counselor Shepherd's motion to consult the public on the zoning bylaw and the planning. And, yeah, I mean, we have to. It, it needs to be done. We need to know what other people think, not just us. Uh, it's, it's led to problems like this that we haven't done that on time. It's led to us, you know, not having a leg to stand on when people come to us and say, or when we go to people and say, you need to follow our bylaws. Our bylaws are obsolete. If we haven't followed them, they're out of, they're out of date.
Thank you. CCANS issues has been, always been on this table long time. And I think we need to deal with it. I have Ma- Mayor Bill?
Thank you, Counselor Akumalik. I, I agree with Counselor Stevenson and, and I, I do, I do appreciate Counselor Shepherd's move to fix a known problem. Um, it's clear as day um, that it is an issue. Um, but I'll happily second uh, Counselor Stevenson's motion right after. Um, and I was, I also was under the impression that we were having a new general plan, so um. I'm a little bit confused right now too.
Okay, um. Nata? Imukel, manawit. Tamukue inookate gilaktav, isumaynaka teyamota, uwaximutating, teyama, uwaxumutating. Ilivite silatan amiskulomota, uwunaximutating. Tugaynaxutating, akshyotating. Tamuna, kengunalaito, teyamitilewa. Tana. Aipagutake koyaga, ih shuliyo, tamutuma. Uh, teyamit, teyamit. Tidukidoma, tata, ubalomen. Isimaximunax, seurukalik, tamukua. Lelini. Isimumaga, tukshingitato. Seurukmuka, inookate, aipagin. Isumaynaka teyamota, tamukuto, angamit. Ilagin, awanaitukke, kurukete, seurukli, iglukli. Akripalise mumota, am, angakseto. Kurukalakte, tarkuti, iglu, iglulada, yavapalde, yavhal. Hanukya tamukua, bigarok, patseuruk. Umayagav, neogay bigteyapan, tamukuninga, tekuruyak, wengenda, teyasimutating. Hanukya. Tamit, tukyotase. Go ahead, Nimi. Sheila?
Thank you, Chair Akumalik. Um. I uh, believe I understand clearly uh, Counselor Shepherd's motion. I agree that it, that um, um, CCANS, um. That the issue needs to be updated and that there needs to be regulations in place. And I, I believe this is the last uh, agenda item. Um, so perhaps possibly could we make a friendly amendment that the motion include um. Canvassing uh, the public as well to uh. To get feedback from, from the community. I, I'm not too sure, but, but I uh, I also support Counselor Shepherd's motion.
Go ahead, Counselor Shepherd?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As a general plan amendment, that would require a, a public consultation process.
Okay. I think we're pretty much know where we're going. Any other comments or questions? Counselor Stevenson?
So, thank you, uh, Chairperson Akumalik. Again, I mean, I'll reiterate that I'm not in favor of just dealing with one small portion of the general plan, and that's why I'm not in favor of the motion, but. I am also concerned about uh, enforcing or our municipal enforcement enforcing bylaws that currently I would consider out of date. I, I guess I'm going to ask you to read your motion again, because I can't remember it, but exactly, but do you deal with that part of that in your motion? And maybe if not, then we could deal with that after.
Go ahead.
Not specifically in the motion. The biggest issue. Dealt with in the motion is, is to instruct council to instruct administration to develop policy to address it. Uh, there's nothing specifically relating to the enforcement measures. It's a, if we're going down that path, it's a likely next step and a, and a likely next discussion. But that enforcement wasn't, wasn't specifically in my motion. If you want, I can read the motion again for you if you'd like.
Go ahead.
Um, you know, direct. Request that council uh, direct administration to make any changes to necessary bylaws, plans and policies to allow CCANS in the core. When being fully incorporated into existing structures and appearance and function and to regulate appearance.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? This is going. Pretty far now. Uh, Depremea Booster?
So, it's a, thank you, uh, uh, Counselor Akumalik. Um, it, it's a really important issue that is not being addressed by, by this motion is that, that whole enforcement aspect. Um, and so, so if we're directing our team to go ahead and make these sweeping changes. You know, we, we know that it, it has been enforced sporadically. I don't, I don't know. You, you, at the beginning of your statement, you said that, that it was new, newly being enforced. Uh, I don't know what that means, if that's last week or last year, uh, given that this policy or these, these bylaws are so old. Uh, and, and so, you know, without, um, you know, without. Clarity on, on, you know. What that means for, for the historic, because I've. Um, uh, the citizen that, that produced the, the uh, um. Petition that, that has been mentioned also shared uh. Hundreds of, of, of locations of CCANS that uh, they went around and found and mapped out. So I don't think this bylaw or this, this motion covers that, uh, so I won't be voting in favor. Thanks.
Thank you. Mayor Bill?
Thank you, Counselor Akumalik. I just want to um, not say sorry, but kind of say sorry for bringing up the petition. I know you brought it up to the committee. Uh, this issue is a, Counselor Shepherd is bringing up a different issue. Uh, the, the petition really wasn't part of this conversation and shouldn't be part of this conversation because it isn't tabled. Uh, it isn't translated. We shouldn't really be talking about it because um, Counselor Nata hasn't had a chance to um, read it and understand it. Um, most people around the table haven't had a chance to read it and understand it. Um, but we did talk about it and I just wanted to clarify that it really shouldn't be part of the discussion, although uh, it's, it's, it's here. It, it will be tabled soon for this exact motion. Thank you.
Yes, I made it clear. It's a separate issue. Uh, Counselor Lukasi? Okay. Any other comments or questions? I think we're ready to move. Um, I'll call for vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand. One, two, three. All those against, one, two, three, four, five. Motion is defeated. Thank you, uh, Stevenson?
Uh, thank you, Chairperson Akumalik. I'd like to move to recommend to council that we direct staff to begin the process of. Revising or uh, yeah, revising the general plan and the zoning bylaw, including fulsome public concentration.
Thank you. Seconded by Mayor Bill. Any comments or questions? Uh, Kyle?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, support completely. I'm just wondering, you know, to do the fulsome review that I would like to see is going to be. Involve cost, and I'm just wondering if we need to amend the budget or include this in the twenty twenty one budget at this point in time. Obviously, we'd like to get going on it as soon as possible. Um, is that something we can do realistically before January, or is it something we should budget for and plan for the twenty twenty one year?
Go ahead, Stevenson?
I, I don't have an answer to what's left in the budget now for that, but I would hope that we could get started, knowing that there's no way it would be finished before. January first, so there would probably be some budgeting cost in, in next year's budget for it as well, I would hope. I would though also, if needed, uh, be in favor of amending the budget to make sure that the work got started before. I would, I would not want to see it being started in January. I'd like it to be started now.
Okay, Mark?
Thank you. Thank you. A full review of a, um, a general plan and a zoning bylaw is quite an undertaking and often quite expensive. So in other places, I mean, the amount of money involved could be fifty to a hundred thousand dollars. Um, and the time factor, depending on the scope, could be two years anyway, like to do a full one. Heads up, as you make your decision, one of the questions I will ask is, can you provide staff? And if it's not convenient right now, fine, in the near future, but in terms of scope, what, you know, what are you thinking? So in, in some cases, you, you can have like a, a focused review. So maybe there's certain sections or certain policies, but if you're talking a complete overview, well, then I, I would like to hear that sort of direction. Or, or if there's any specifics, you know, hey, uh, here's some real trouble scenarios we have. Here's the list. We definitely want you to look at these. That would be very helpful as well. Thank you.
Okay. Um, I just want to remind people that we're at the committee meeting level. So any form of motion will be a recommendation to the council. Uh, Mayor Bill?
Thank you. Um, I would like to see a whole review. Uh, I think the housekeeping, cleaning that you guys have already been undertaking, um, will help in that review and, and help point out the, the things that we actually deal with on a very regular basis. Um, but of course, we're going to have to hire a con, a contractor, um, to undertake this review. It's not going to be, uh, in, in-house. So, uh, Councilor Shepherd's correct with the, the monetary change. We'll, we will have to make some sort of amendment to the budget for that for sure. Um, fin, and we had, we do have a finance call coming up. I think it's the 29th of, uh, September. Um, maybe we can put it on that with, uh, Councilor Shepherd's approval. Um, I think we can talk about it then. But, um, I, I, you know, I, I actually thought we were, uh, we had a full review coming, uh, anyways. I thought we were already in the middle of the full review, so I'm a little bit surprised to hear that we aren't. Um, and I'm, uh, you know, wholeheartedly behind the fact that we need to get it done.
Thank you. There was a hand up somewhere here. Lukasi?
I, thanks, Akumlik. I personally think that cost factor should not be an issue because we really need this, uh, this, um, bylaws updated or we need to do a full scope review. It shouldn't even matter if it costs a hundred thousand, two hundred thousand. We need this done. It's like expired way before the, uh, like a long time ago. So cost shouldn't be an issue and this should be started as soon as possible.
Kyle?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Still, my, I have no concern with the cost. It's more of a process thing. It's obviously a worthwhile investment. It, it's important that we go to the community and, and, and consult on this. Like we, you know, there hasn't been widespread community consultations until, you know, prior to the 2010 report that was, that was generated. Uh, when we look at, you know, the Seongan district that's developed completely in a different way than intended in that plan, um, we need to analyze the provision of trucked water services in other areas. There, there's so much. We need to consult the community, community on how we're going to develop over the next decades. Uh, and that needs to happen regardless. I, I'm pretty sure we're going to get unanimous support for this. I'm not going to talk it to death, but it's really, really important.
Thank you. Stevenson?
Thank you. Uh, and we can certainly talk with Mark in the future date about exactly how we see that happening like he asked. But section 1.5 of the general plan does describe the method that was used in 2009, uh, including, uh, focus groups and open houses, public meetings. Uh, it, it took somewhere near a year, not two in that case, though I, I mean, I'm not against two if that's what the decision is that it needs to take that long, but it needs to start as soon as possible, in my opinion. But section 1.5 does outline how, the, the process that was undertaken to have the general plan that we have now.
Okay. Uh, can you reread your motion?
Sure. I, uh, moved to recommend to council to direct staff to begin the process of revising a, a full revision of the zoning bylaw and general plan, including fulsome public consultation.
I think that's pretty clear. Lukasi? Or Mayor Bill seconded our read?
Double second.
Um, go ahead, Mark?
I don't want to disrupt your, your flow of conversation here. Um, if it's helpful, whenever you're ready, I can, um, advise the committee as to what, what work items were on our table for this year or at, at your.
Thank you. Ready to vote? Any other comments or questions to the motion? Mayor Bill?
Did we want to hear what Mark had to say? We're, we're ready to vote, but, uh, he wanted to add to this conversation.
Sorry.
No, I, I didn't want to disrupt your flow, but ju- just so you're aware, just sort of a, a refresher in terms of some of the larger things that were on our work plan for this particular year, 2020, the, the overview of the land administration bylaw, trying to bring that to, to closure. So that's moving through the system right now. The, uh, undertaking of the transportation master plan. Okay, so that's, that's in progress. The housekeeping of the general plan zoning bylaw, including the consolidation. So that's it going through the process right now. Um, once the general plan amendment is approved and has final, um, approval for the Inuit-owned lands, we were then going to start looking at the development design for the municipal land adjacent to the Inuit-owned land. So that was sort of going to be a next large project. And we're also looking at our, our GIS. So the, the GIS, the digital mapping systems hasn't been maintained for a minimum of five years. Um, the licenses expired five years ago. Uh, there's discrepancies between the hard copy zoning maps and the information in, in the GIS. There was a limited exposure within the organization to GIS and I'm renegotiating the costs of, of licenses. And we're just starting to unfold a, a cloud-based GIS right now. And if we can get it functioning correctly, and I, I'll speak to the, the SAO, um, but I'd like to unfold it to other, other, uh, staff in different departments so they can self-serve. So, so that's what's been on our plate and what we're advancing so far this year. Thank you.
Okay, that's a good information. Thank you. To the motion, comments or questions? If not, ready to vote? All those in favor, please raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five. Unanimous? One against? Motion carried. So, go ahead. Motion to adjourn by Mayor Bill, seconded by Kyle. All those in favor? Thank you, unanimous. Thanks for coming and thank you, Andrew.